Let's see. Just waiting for her to get back on. Welcome. I'm trying to remember what was the last thought that I was running on before it finished. Wonder if I can find. See. Oh, so I did sign it. Okay. All right, let me see if I can find it on here. All right, listen to this. It is the love of self that destroys our peace. While self is all alive, we stand readily continually to guard it from mortification and insult. But when we are dead and our life is hid with Christ in God, we shall not take ne- neglect or slights to heart.
Neglects or slights? Too hard.
Sent this to somebody almost two years ago.
That's a good one. Um, colds on your head. You know that verse? You want to explain that, Joseph, according to your understanding?
Say that again?
Let me find the Bible verse.
The meekness of Christ manifests in the home will make the inmates happy. It provokes no quarrel, gives back no anger answer, but soothes the irritated tempter. I mean temper and diffuses a gentleness that is felt by all within its charmed circle. I mean, felt by within is charmed circle. Wherever cherished, it must, it makes the families of earth a part of the one great family above. I think that was in Mount of Blessing.
Not too many of us have had homes like that, but sure does sound wonderful. For thou shalt heap coals of fire upon his head, and the Lord shall reward thee. Proverbs twenty-five, twenty-two.
I need to look that up. Or you put it in the group. Or the chat.
It's basically saying that you should not be offended. Like that other comment about get warmed from the.
Warm from the cold?
Yes. That's that fits together too.
The reason why you would draw warmth from the cold because you read God's word, it told you that they're gonna do that. So you're already in the mindset, you're prepared for it.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking, the word of God. Amen. His love is warm and caring and. I've always heard that this putting heaping coals of fire has to do with the Africans, the way they would get coals from the fire and they would put them. Well, somehow when they would go around in the morning, the village, people would put coals in there so that they could share the fire starting ability somehow. But otherwise, it always sounds like you're doing something kind will make them like out, like it'll make them feel like they're actually being destroyed or something.
All right, Romans chapter twelve, verse twenty and twenty-one. Oh my goodness, oh, it is this.
Romans twelve, twenty?
Yes. You know what? Back up to nineteen.
Dearly beloved, avenge not yourselves, but rather give place unto wrath. For it is written, vengeance is mine. I will repay, said the Lord. Therefore, if thine enemy hunger, feed him. If he thirst, give him drink. For in so doing, thou shalt heap coals of fire on his head.
And the last verse?
Be not overcome of evil, but overcome evil with good.
Now, why would he tell you to do that?
So this is good, doing this, whatever it is, is good.
I'm trying to tell you.
You don't want to be.
Is only of good, so everything he do will be of good, and that's why he asks you to do that. Because if you do that, you got him in you.
What does it mean to do it then if it's? What does it mean if your enemy hunger, feed him? If he thirst, give him drink.
It means that you're not gonna have any malice. Just because you had a disagreement with somebody, that mean you can't still be cordial with them.
Yeah, and you can stab the ability to see their need. That shows that you're not. Because you can see their need.
Because you know what? There's another thing to see what's going on that many folk are they feeling disturbed by this. They're saying, you know, you coming in here with this non-Trinitarian stuff and you disenfranchise and defracting the church and all this kind of stuff. Well, what does it say that was going to do to cut in? And what did it say that's going to do the shaking?
Straight true.
So aren't you bringing truth?
The word.
So because they don't know truth, they hold to those fables.
The word is a double edged sword.
Exactly. So when I go back and look at these verses here, it says, but rather give place unto wrath. I mean, but.
Yeah.
For it is written, vengeance is mine. Now, in most people's mind, when they see God having vengeance, they think that he's coming to destroy something. But what really is happening in, he's just presenting himself, just like how he did in Genesis chapter one. He said, let there be light, he presented himself because it was no sun, no moon, no stars. He just appeared and light showed up. So when we're talking about wrath of God, if you study out what wrath of God is, it has to do with the makeup of what he is, that if you're not on in righteousness, you get consumed. But if you in righteousness, that mean your light is shining and I've never seen light consume light. I've never seen fire consume fire. All I see is that those things come together, they candle a brighter light. They candle a brighter fire. So the fire will be hotter.
Yeah.
And the light will be brighter. And that stays in the framework of righteousness. Because those that are in darkness, they're gonna do like what happened when Moses came down from, from in the clouds. They say, get away from us, you're too bright. Put a veil over you. They don't want to be in the room with it. That's what would happen if they were in heaven, so they'll be miserable. So he gives them what they want. And they pass out dead. And that's loving is I offered you as much as I could and you say that it's not possible. I can't force myself on you, then you would get the result that you asked for.
He doesn't want to hurt them, you know, by putting them into a place where they'll be so unhappy. Everyone will have what they want.
That's true. Let's see. That was just that heaps of coal was in two scriptures in the Bible, one in the Old Testament and one in the New Testament.
Oh. What, how did it go? Coals of fire or heap coals?
You just read it in Romans.
Keep coals of fire? That's the description that comes in the Old Testament? I wanted to look it up.
Yeah, we first went to Proverbs, what was it?
Oh.
But this is what I'm telling you, studying by words, Proverbs chapter twenty-five, verse twenty-two.
Yeah.
Has the same lineup of words verbatim as Romans, chapter twelve, verse nineteen through twenty-one.
Got the same two verses together. Your enemy. For thou shalt, for thou shalt heap coals of fire upon his head, and the Lord shall reward thee. Look at the next verse in Proverbs, why does it have that? Why do you put them right after each other? North wind drives away rain, so an angry countenance, a backbiting tongue.
Okay, I got something I'm gonna. Let me put this in there. What happened to it? Maybe. If you could put that in the chat for me. So Lorraine could see that. Because I tried to do it from my computer and it wouldn't do it. If you could read that one there, that one's the only incident of that three words in a row in spirit of prophecy.
Okay. Dearly beloved, avenge not yourselves. For it is written, vengeance is mine. I will repay, said the Lord. Therefore, if thine enemy hunger, feed him. If he thirst, give him a drink. For in so doing, thou shalt heap coals of fire on his head. Be not overcome of evil, but overcome evil with good. Romans twelve, it is never best to draw off or to be hostile toward those who are suspicious and unjust toward you. Everyone has his particular traits of character. And under various circumstances, they will be exhibited. God requires his disciples to take up the cross and follow Christ. Jesus said, be therefore perfect, even as your father in heaven is perfect. This is in perfect accordance with the words which he spoke to Moses from the pillar of cloud. He said, you shall be holy, for I, your Lord, the Lord, your God, am holy. This injunction of God to be to the visible leader of the hosts of Israel was not spoken simply to a few responsible distinguished officers of illust and illustrious, and it stops there. It was not spoken.
Allustrious men, but to the whole hosts of Israel, we are to seek to carry out his command when association with others. Especially in your association with those who oppose the counsel of God against themselves. See, that's what I'm trying to do right now is that even though we may not agree, I'm gonna still love you, I'm gonna still go through. And you know, we might be working on a project or whatever. I'm still there because I do that with other believers that ain't trying to believe what we believe. And we don't have a problem with it, so why can't you do that with somebody that you supposedly have been walking together for a period of time? They do not manifest the wisdom that is from above, which is first pure, then peaceable, easy to entreated, full of mercy and good fruits. Each individual is a part of the great whole. That's what I'm talking about. So that's a study right there. All by itself.
Yeah, I do need to understand this so much more.
Say that again?
I do need to understand this subject of you know, like how to be towards those who are contrary or out of the way or hurtful or hateful.
I mean, what you are talking about, yeah, you gotta articulate it. But the bulk of it would come from the aspect of showing how to do it practically. I believe that there needs to be more practical applications. In Romans twelve. I mean, this brings more clarity to understand it. And you fit in your mind to what is being expressed from the word of God. Instead of like what have you been educated on or your own personal thoughts of what is being expressed?
We need to remember that if we cannot love our brother that we can see, how could we expect to be in heaven?
I'm here now looking at the chapter, I mean, the paragraph before the one I sent you. It says, bear in mind the fact that the church militant is not church triumphant. Cultivate a spirit of kindness, of true heavenly courtesy. Some may look upon this manner of courtesy as mere weakness, but do not regard it thus. It will always pay to be kind, to be courteous. Let love be without dissimulation, abhor that which is evil, cleave to that which is good. Be kindly affected one to another with brotherly love, in honor, preferring one another. Bless them with, bless them which persecute you. Bless and curse not. Rejoice with them that do rejoice, and weep with them that weep. Be of the same mind, one toward another. Mind not high things, but con- condescend to men of low estate. Be not wise in your own countenance. Recompense to no man evil for evil. Provide things honest in the sight of all men, if it be possible, as much as lieth in you. Live peacefully, peaceably with all men. So that give more to your more. More articulation to what you're asking about.
If you see a brother that is attacking you or that it's rejecting you, doesn't mean you have to walk with him, it just means that you treat them kindly when you see them and go your own way.
you treat them kindly when you see them and go your own way.
I see.
Some people do not do that, though. Some people want the drama and they want, they think that they can fix it, and it's only the Holy Spirit in that person's heart.
It's so true.
Yeah, so they'll go back to it instead of staying a distance. Um, they'll go back to it because they want to try to fix it, is that what you're saying?
We can't, we just can't. It's not in our power. It says in the Bible that God can change the heart of a king. We can't do that. We can pray.
I was walking today and I noticed that I had feelings of anxiety, and I asked God, you know, where is it coming from? And I was wanting, like, I had just spoken with someone who was driving by. He lives next door and, um, I was thinking, oh, this world is so out of control and people are this way and that and no one seems spiritual or some, all kinds of God. But then the thought came to me, I can't control the world. And then I was thinking how God is in control. But I didn't get really far on that, and that's, I think, the issue that I've been studying more to hopefully stop the blockages in my spiritual life to the Word, so that I can let God in all the time and stay connected. Because if I think I can, you know, if I'm afraid that God's not in control, then, um, I feel like I want to control that. I didn't have a problem, but like, you know, came out of twenty years of abuse where it was like, was God in control of all that? I mean, no.
Of course, he was in control.
It wasn't, he, the devil was reigning there because I chose to allow that marriage and God pled with me, don't do it, and then.
I mean, what you saying there may be true, but what I'm saying is overall, the big picture, he was in control. He doesn't make you move any faster than you want to. He told the disciples, I have much to tell you, but you cannot bear it yet. So it's when you come into where you willing to bear it, he'll deliver it to you. So you should only look back as it as a testimony that I went through all of that. And God didn't like cut me off and put me to my death or something like that, like people say. And you're here now to talk about it. That's a testimony. As little as it may seem, it's still a testimony, because you're coming into more marvelous light.
Oh, yeah. He was in control, like a dome.
Exactly.
In control of, he didn't stop words, he didn't stop things, he, he was just, he would only let it go yea far, whatever his goodwill would have allowed. Yeah.
I mean, look at Job, he lost children, he lost almost his wife too. Wife told him to curse God and die. He's like, I ain't doing it, I'm doing what he told me to do. I'll suffer more for him. So the suffering is just to flesh out our defects in character. And if we hold fast to his word and be, be that word, you're gonna come out on the other side and in that process, while you're um, coming out like gold from the trust, you also have like stars added to your crown, because people are watching, people are making account of what, how you're maneuvering through your situation. But I went a little further on that same thing in this paragraph here, this is the site one is this. It say, let those who are engaging president, presenting truth and vind- vindicating truth, be careful that, be careful what manner of spirit they manifest. Either toward their brethren who they think in error or toward unbelievers. Through pride, self-esteem, egotism and arrogance, men put on a armor and stand ready to do battle. But their words, their attitude reveal the fact that Christ is not abiding in the soul.
Wow.
She follow up with the next paragraph, this are like, you go and you just get those words, you can't stop where the words, while you go around this stuff ahead of it and beneath it, it get even further. Let me see if I can do this before this runs out. Those who believe the truth must put on the armor of Christ's righteousness. Where Christ abides, there is meatness and gentleness. The un-Christian temper that is aroused up to meet the un-Christian temper never creates peace, but needlessly irritates. The Lord has a co- a controversy with those who are every ready to reprove and to irritate others. We are not to irritate them. Many have excellent qualifications, as had the class to whom the true witness says. Nevertheless, I have somewhat against thee, because thou hast left thy first love. Remember therefore, from whence thou art fallen, and repent, and do the first works. Or else I will come unto thee quickly and will remove thy candlestick out of his place, except thou repent. Who is it that speaks to the churches? These things say of he that have seven spirits of God and the seven stars, Revelation three, one. It say, he who loses his love for Jesus loses his love for his fellow man. Those who are bound up with the heart of infinite love will love those for whom Christ has died, as Christ loves them. Jesus says, this is my commandment, that ye love one another, how much, Lord, as I have loved you. We're going down to the last minute.
Well, that was all challenged, being in the church all the time and it seems easier now that I'm where I am is to allow the love of God in.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That's easy to do.
Hey, I think I can go one more time after this, because this is about to be done.